I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, November 29, 2016, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present are Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicki Morgan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mrs. Marisol Kiana, and myself, Nelda Sullivan. There are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting is duly called and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Our invocation will be given by Kenny Fernandez and the pledges will be given by Fred Roberts.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to serve our district and our community. Heavenly Father, I pray for our new president-elect, the leaders of our country, the leaders of our community, and of course us as leaders of the district. Pray for the teachers, the administrators, all educators, and I just thank you again for this opportunity that you give us each and every day to make the best of each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We don't need to have a policy committee meeting tonight, so we will have the Personnel Committee when we all meet for executive session.
What are we doing? Nothing?
Going home. We're done.
Would you like to say?
I'm adjourned.
We're going to adjourn to close session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer/employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. The superintendent's formative evaluation, superintendent's contract and related actions, 551.071, to consult with the district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Opens Meeting Act. When the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, to consider legal advice on any item listed on the agenda, 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at 7 o'clock or as close as possible.
We have a lot going on.
You got coffee and food at your place? You gonna have coffee and food at your place?
Are you that ready to speak?
You can read the notes.
Are you going to do that? Okay, well, I'll get us back in open session. The board will reconvene in open session. It looks like we have a full house tonight and we're delighted that each and every one of you are here. We know some of you are here for some special reasons and we're happy to have you even if it is for the special reasons. We'll go ahead and conduct our regular business meeting. First, Dr. Powell is going to talk to us about the public hearing on district of innovation designation.
Board members, I'd like to remind you, the last time we met, we did a resolution to research the idea of becoming a district of innovation, which gives us some flexibility in some of the requirements that were held to by the state. With that, we have to have a hearing, a public hearing, so that if anyone wants to make a comment about that, they can do that at this time. And then later in the agenda, you're going to approve, we had a core team, and now we'll have a, once you approve it, a steering committee. And then from there, there will be subcommittees and more stakeholders involved. So there'll be parents, staff members, community members involved in the planning, and eventually a plan will be developed, posted on the website, and then we'll come back to you for further approval, as well as our DEC. So at this time, if anyone in the audience has any comments that they want to make regarding our pursuing the district of innovation, now is the time to come forward. We'll just give a minute, we'll do wait time like they do in the classroom and see if anybody wants to speak. Okay. I don't see anyone coming forward. Again, it's a plan for us. The legislature is giving us some flexibility. The areas that we're looking for in Pasadena ISD is some flexibility with certification for our CTE teachers. Perhaps, for example, there might be an engineer that's worked in the field and wants to come and teach our students in that area, and it'd give us some flexibility in hiring them without having the teacher certification at that time when they come to work for us. That's just one example. There's some flexibility with full-day pre-K and funding regarding that. We're looking into that. We've increased in Pasadena ISD the number of full-day pre-K students that we serve, and we want to continue to do that. We know the benefits. We've seen the benefits personally from what our kids are getting at that level and how they're coming to us prepared in kindergarten, so that's another area. There's some flexibility in calendar and other things that I think will be beneficial to not only our students, but our staff as well and our district as a whole. So again, we'll keep researching it and bring a comprehensive plan back to you for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the discussion of state financial accountability ratings, 2014-2015. John, are you going to give us that? Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Powell and board members. I'm here this evening to present to you our annual financial accountability management report for the year ended August 31, 2015. They call this our first report, the Financial Integrity System, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. We'll call it first report. Do you have the report in your packet in front of you? Basically, this report, the ratings are based on 15 financial categories such as administrative costs, expenditures, accuracy of district's financial information submitted to TEA, and other financial vulnerabilities or material weaknesses in internal controls as determined by your external auditor. The report is graded on a scale of A to F, and Pasadena scored a perfect score of A, Superior Achievement, now for the 14th consecutive year. On pages four through seven in your packet are the details of the questions and answers that we were rated on. I'm going to jump past that to page eight in your packet and talk about the critical indicators. These are indicators one through five that we were rated on. These have to do with our annual financial report. Was it submitted timely? Did we have a cleaned audit report? Were there any findings in our audit of weak internal controls? Did we default on any debt and any other major issues such as that? The other indicators have to do with administrative cost expenditures, accuracy of district financial information, et cetera. Going through these quickly, on indicator six, the district had adequate cash and current investments sufficient to cover expenditures. Ratio of current assets to current liabilities were adequate to cover short-term debt. On indicator eight, the ratio of total assets to long-term liabilities was adequate to support that activity. Indicator nine, the revenue of the general fund exceeded expenditures. We had cash on hand greater than 60 days of expenditures. Indicator 10, the district had adequate debt and revenue to cover our debt payments. Indicator 11 has to do with administrative cost, and this indicator, it shows that our administrative cost was 15.6 million below the state standard, and I'll talk some more about this in a minute, but that's something we can really hang our hat on. Indicator number 12, the district had enrollment growth and did not experience a 15% decline in students-to-taff ratio over three years. Indicator 13, the actual expenditures reported to TEA and PMS for $456 million had a variance of .0001% of $240 due to just rounding of pennies. On indicator 14, the audit report was free of any instances of material weaknesses and internal controls over financial reporting and compliance matters. And finally, indicator 15, the district did not receive any repayment schedule for being overpaid by TEA on their financials. In summary, the district, the PIST school board, administration, and community have worked hard to maintain the financial position and condition of the district over the past number of years. This report demonstrates to all parents and taxpayers the condition of the district. Moving on to page 10, there you have a detailed schedule showing you the administrative cost expenditures over the last 10 or 12 years, and you can see how we've been under the limit all the years. And again, 1415, we were under by 15.6 million dollars. Jumping over to page 11, another critical area, our tax collections. We collect at 99.48% of our taxes. Jumping over to page 13, and I'm just hitting highlights of the report now. On page 13 is the section on awards and recognitions. Here are listed all the awards achieved by the business office where Ms. Conway spearheaded our effort to get the various awards for the budgeting and financial reporting, and this reflects the district's commitment and the governing body and staff to meeting the highest quality principles of government budgeting and financial transparency. Following that, we are required to place the superintendent's contract in our packet. And the very last page, we're required to report any reimbursements received by the superintendent and board members, any outside compensation received by the superintendent, other gifts received by board members, and any business transactions between the school district and board members. And that concludes my report. If anyone has questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
How do we start getting these gifts?
None of us are doing a good job at that.
You look good in stripes.
Thank you very much, John.
You're welcome.
We are very proud of our entire business office. They do a great job and work well with our staff to make those things happen. You ready for special recognition?
The next item is the good part of the meeting. We have special recognitions.
Well, board members, we're here tonight to recognize an amazing group of students. For 60 years, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation has recognized and honored academically talented students and encouraged the pursuit of intellectual excellence. Over the years, the national merit competition has become an accepted standard of excellence and an encouragement to guide students toward higher education. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition that scholarships that began in 1955 with high school juniors who entered the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT. Pasadena ISD administers the exam to all enrolled 9th, 10th, and 11th graders, and we are so proud tonight to honor students recognized by the College Board and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for their outstanding performance on the PSAT. The members of the class of 2017 here tonight have earned either recognition as a national merit semifinalist, a commended scholar, or a Hispanic scholar. So we hope you will agree with these exceptionally talented individuals, and many more like them deserve profound recognition. We begin by recognizing those students at J. Frank Doby High School, and I'll introduce you to Stephanie McKinney, who will take it over from here.
Good evening. I will be introducing the students from J. Frank Doby High School. First, we have Jay Doe. He's a commended scholar. He's planning to study political science and right now attend the University of Texas, but he's still waiting to hear back from Rice, so he'll hear back April the 1st, so our fingers crossed for Jay. Our second commended scholar at Doby is Jordan Efron. He is planning right now to attend Brigham Young University and study music education. We also have Noe Garcia. He's another commended scholar from Doby, and he's attending Texas A&amp;M University and will be studying engineering.
Hi, my name is Keitha Curvin. I'm the senior counselor at Memorial High School, and this first student that I'm going to recognize is very, very special. He's our first and only in the district at this time to be the national merit semifinalist. First at Memorial, and he's also recognized as the national Hispanic scholar. His decisions are, he decides to go to Baylor, and he wants to major in computer engineering. Our second student is Mason Jeffrey Davis. He's a commended scholar. His plans is to attend either Stanford, Berkeley, or UT with a degree in computer science. My next student is Jesús Botello Escuville. He is a national Hispanic scholar. His college plans is to attend Rice University or Columbia University with a degree of Bachelor of Music in Violin Performance or Bachelor of Science in Chemistry.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Garcia, and I'm the other senior counselor at Pasadena Memorial. The first student I'd like to introduce is Andrew Mendoza. He is a commended scholar, national Hispanic scholar. His future plans include being an astronomer or engineer, attending the University of Texas at Austin, to major in physics or aeronautical engineering. The next student we have is Jose Palma. He is a national Hispanic scholar. Jose plans to attend Texas A&amp;M at College Station to receive a degree in political science. Next, we have Sherwin Philippe. He is a commended scholar. His future plans include investment banker with financial institutions. He would like to attend the University of Chicago, UT Austin, or the University of Houston to major in economics and business. And last but not least, we have Laura Maria Rosodivita. She is a national Hispanic scholar. She has applied to Rice, University of Houston, UT, and HBU, and she will major in chemistry. We are very proud of our Pasadena Memorial High School seniors.
I'm Allison Lu Allen, and I'm going to introduce the outstanding students from Rayburn. First, we have David Chapa. He is a national Hispanic scholar. He has been accepted to the College of Engineering for U of H Clear Lake, UT, and A&amp;M. He's also applied to MIT, which is his first choice, and he will hear from them in December. Next, we have Cynthia Haza Fuentes, national Hispanic scholar. She has been accepted to UT, and she's awaiting to hear from Baylor and SMU. She plans to major in English and be pre-law. And now we have Laura Garza, national Hispanic scholar. She's been accepted into the engineering program at A&amp;M. She's been accepted to UT, and she has also applied to MIT and Rice and is hoping to hear from them in December.
South Houston High School is pleased to present three students who have earned the national Hispanic scholar recognition from the College Board. Our first recognition is for Marlene Corillo. Marlene plans to attend the University of Texas at San Antonio and major in environmental science. Marlene hopes to discover new and efficient ways to help preserve the environment so we can call, we can all experience the benefits of a healthy earth. Marlene is also passionate about drawing and graphic design and plans to continue to utilize these talents as well. Next, we would like to recognize Albert Garza. Albert plans to attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in computer engineering. Albert aspires to develop new and innovative hardware that might help shape the future And finally, we'd like to recognize Carissa Marin. Carissa is, plans to attend the University of Texas at Dallas and major in arts and technology. Carissa looks forward to her studies in animation and graphic design and hopes to work with Disney one day. And I just wanted to say that we could not honor these students without the support of all of our parents across the district, and if we could have all the parents please stand so we can recognize you for all your support for our students, everyone across the district. Thank you.
One more round of applause for these very smart kiddos.
We want to hear all the great things these students do in their future, too, as well.
The next item on our agenda is public comments, and no one has signed up to speak, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion's passed. Section four.
Madam President, under the personnel section, I move that we approve addenda pages A through F of the, for administrative personnel.
Motion is made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All of those in favors?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion's passed. Ms. Morgan, will you name those individuals, please?
I certainly will. It's my honor. Mary Ann Hogan. Is Mary Ann here? Hi, Mary Ann. Mary Ann has been named educational diagnostician, and we certainly welcome you to our district. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
This is Dr. Kennedy. She is my mentor and a very dear friend, and with me, you get personal.
Next is Rhonda Bell. Is Rhonda here? Hi, Rhonda. Rhonda has been named Dean of Instruction for the Early College High School at South Houston High School. Did you bring family with you?
I have my wonderful supportive husband, Dr. Robert Bell.
And we also welcome you to Pasadena. Tamika Brown. Is Tamika here? Hi, Tamika. Tamika has been named Dean of Early College High School at Sam Rayburn High School. Congratulations. Do you have family with you?
I do. I have my husband, Michael, here with me, and my two girls, Alyssa here and Maya, and I have a bunch of my Rayburn family here with me.
Awesome. Awesome. Dr. Angela Kennedy. I know she's here. Hi, Dr. Kennedy. Dr. Kennedy has been named Dean of Early College High School at Pasadena Memorial High School. Congratulations. Did you bring family with you?
I have a whole row.
Good.
My son, Ryan Murphy, is beautiful girlfriend, Elena Waitkowski, and my parents, Debbie Rowley Kennedy, and my sister and brother-in-law, Aaron and Matt Wex.
Pages are sticking together. Ryan Peel. Hi, Ryan. Ryan has been named Dean of Instruction, Early College High School, J. Frank Doby High School. Congratulations. I know you have family.
I've got my wife, Holly.
Hi, Holly.
Along with several members of the Doby administration.
Woo-hoo. Last but not least, Michael Todd Van Essen. Mike's been named principal of Doby 9th Grade Center. And I know you brought family with you. You've got Doby, but...
Yes, I do. I've got the lovely wife, wife, 25 years, Michelle, my daughter, Kristen, my Doby family and extended Doby family all over. Thank you, everybody.
We wish each one of you well in your new positions, and know that you're going to bring a lot of great things to Pasadena ISD.
For those of you that have come for this special part of our board meeting, you're free to leave if you'd like, or you can stay and join us for the rest of the board meeting.
Got y'all want to stay? Charlie, you're staying, aren't you?
Charlie's waiting.
Van Essen, you going?
I'm going to get the donuts.
Going to get the donuts at the new, I'll be for the coffee.
Make sure I get them first.
All right. None of that courage stuff. Bye, see you later, Holly.
Mr. Van Essen, we have a meeting in the morning. Principal meeting.
Principal meeting, yes. Mr. Moses, the donut.
Okay, very good.
Also, tell Mr. Moses that, Mr. Van Essen, I was taking my Christmas decorations down yesterday, and I found my J. Frank Doby ornament, so it'll be on my tree.
There we go. Very good. I'm getting a hand for that.
Not sure where, what event I got that at, but...
You got that at Chili Contest.
Yes. It's a gift-bank, it's on Chili. I didn't either. I saw Longhorn, I was like, I have a Texas Longhorn?
You didn't go to Chili Contest? It's the 17th. I'll make sure you're getting invited.
It's the 17th?
You didn't get invited either?
No.
Like I said, I'll make sure that she gets invited. I guess you have to go to Doby.
I like to go there. It's fun.
I guess you're going to live on the wrong side of town.
Oh, it's gone. We'll give him a couple of minutes to get the noise. It's not the 17th? Fred? It's not the 17th, that's a Saturday.
It's the 60th.
When is it?
Sixteenth at 10 o'clock.
That's what I said, the 60th.
I'm putting it on my calendar right now.
Dr. Folen, you want to see if you can create just a little bit of order?
You've got backup reinforcements coming your way.
You've got backup reinforcements coming your way.
It's, it's nice. It's, it's nice.
Are you getting an award?
Her trip. There's a trip for that Bondi.
Her two little boys are for being here, though.
Yeah, I'm telling you. Aren't they precious?
They're being good.
We'll move right along with our agenda. Under Personnel section and Item 2 is consideration and possible approval of superintendent's formative evaluation.
Madam President, I'd like to move that the board approve, approve the superintendent's evaluation as discussed in executive session.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Kendrick?
I don't feel bad.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of amendment to superintendent's contract and related actions.
Madam President, I move the amendment to the superintendent's contract as discussed in executive session be approved.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Item number four, consideration and possible approval of Medical Stop-Loss Coverage Self-Funded Health Plan, CSP Number 17-003. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
And just so you know, we have our Gallagher representative, Mr. Tracy's here, so just in case you have any questions.
No questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. On Certified Personnel, that is for information only. And as we move down to Section Number Five for Educational Selection, we have consideration and possible approval of campus improvement plans for the 2016-17 school year.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I just appreciate all the work that went into all of these plans. It wasn't something that don't appear out of thin air. There's an awful lot of work that goes into it. I hope each of you will thank the people responsible for working on these.
And board members, just so you know, and she'd probably be very mad at me for telling you this, but Darla Massey-Jones heads up, coordinating all of this, as well as the district plan that you'll take action on in just a minute. And unfortunately, as part of our site to see, see, program at San Jack today, she fell and broke her foot. So that's why she's not here tonight. She was doing the presentation on the District of Innovation, so if I fumbled that up, it was because I wasn't really planning to do that this evening. But she was seeing an orthopedic surgeon about the time we went into executive session, so... Keep her in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, and there's been no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. Consideration and possible approval of District Improvement Plan for the 2016-17 school year.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion's carried. Item three, consideration and possible approval of amendment to the agreement between Pasadena Independent School District and Memorial Harmon Community Benefit Corporation for the Wave Clinic.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
In April, Wisdell is here if you have any questions on behalf of this item. I think we're just adding sites. Is that correct? Sullivan and Queens to our list of campuses served.
So is Sullivan, sorry, is Sullivan already in this, or this is what this?
That's what we're amending. We're going to add Sullivan and Queens. They were able to streamline the process and they think they can handle two more schools. It's really going to benefit our kiddos, especially that age group. They need the TDF and the meningitis vaccine. Last year, they vaccinated over 1,200 kids in that feeder pattern. So this will help keep our kids safe and healthy.
Thank you, millions, for your comments. Any more questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item four, consideration and possible approval of a service agreement for teacher training on strategies to increase mathematic achievement between Region Four and Gardens Elementary.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passed. Number five, consideration and possible approval of the appointment of the District of Innovation Committee.
So move. Second?
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passed. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of donation from Spark School Park Program for Bailey Elementary School.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item seven, consideration and possible approval of the extension of early tech purchase from SoulSourceProviderLearning.com.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion pass. Consideration and possible approval of multiple grants.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the multiple grant awards, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Number nine, consideration and possible approval for career and technical education students to participate in national competitions.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
And as we did last spring, we'll update you as these competitions take place. They're just quick turnarounds once the kids complete the competitions and win and move on to that next level. So we'll keep you updated when and where they're going.
How much did we spend last year?
We spent about $100,000 overall, but those weren't all CTE. So the $65,000 should cover the CTE competitions. But overall, for all national competitions, John said about $100,000.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion's carried. The next item, Item 10, consideration and possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School JROTC team members to travel to the Nationals, a national high school drill competition in Daytona Beach, Florida on May the 4th through the 6th, 2017.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is that what you young people are here waiting to hear?
Is this you guys?
Well, stand up and let us recognize you.
I was at that game and your picture isn't here, too, so... Y'all did, represented very well. I was very proud.
Good luck.
And thanks for being here with us tonight. I know we don't have any no's. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed, so the motion is carried. And you'll do a great job, we're sure. Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
I'm surprised Mr. Roberts didn't ask the chaperone. This one's Daytona Beach.
I'm waiting. There's some other ones here. I've got my pick that. I'll tell you. You'll hear me speak that.
Item number 11, consideration and possible approval for Thompson Intermediate to travel to Keystone, Colorado, October the 7th through the 13th.
Question? No, I'm sorry, no.
2017.
So move.
To attend the Keystone Science School in Colorado.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
How's this changed over the last 23 years? What's...
Well, the facilities have changed. They've become a national campground now, so they're much more involved in certain national aspects of it, but their, their program has been pretty much the same. We just pick out which topics we want the kids to learn the most about while they're up there. And they accommodate our needs perfectly and there's some really good lessons to the students up there.
And how many students have you got going this year?
Well, we had to wait till we got approval tonight before we started signing kids up.
Right.
We can take 44.
Wow. Is that kind of, is it kind of known in the school that this, this is something that goes on and the kids are really looking forward to it?
They've been asking about it since Thursday.
Wow, wow. And how long have you been heading it up? I remember the other lady.
I don't, no longer remember how long I've been heading it up, but this will be my 19th year ago with the kids.
Wow.
Wow, that's, wow.
That's wonderful.
It's been a great program ever since we started that. Well, maybe the chaperone and the teachers do, too.
You never have any vacant spaces, do you?
For board members? No, but I don't mind riding up there.
All in favor of this great program, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Item number 12, consideration and possible approval for two Bondi Intermediate Choir students, two parents, and the director to travel to Minneapolis, Minnesota, March the 7th through the 11th, 2017, so the students can perform at the American Choral Directors Association Conference.
So move. Second?
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion?
What a wonderful opportunity for these kids. And I'm glad to see that the parents are going, too. That's, that is absolutely wonderful.
Two out of 4,200 of these kids are fantastic.
Yeah. Unbelievable.
All in favor of sending these very qualified individuals, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Better take warm clothes.
Yeah, March 7th will be cold.
Item number six, student achievements on Pages 183 and 184. We know that the students within our district make great achievements and accomplishments every day. Item number seven, policy update and review. We have none. The financial section. The first item is consideration and possible approval of budget amendments.
I move that we approve the budget amendments.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Item nine, Operations section. Consideration and possible approval of change order number 005 for the Thomas Hancock Elementary School Project.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the motion's passed. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA Number 001, for the Early College Annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's carried. Construction update. In the back of your package. Are there any questions or comments?
Question on, is there any of the bonds left not completed? This one, this one here is 2014. It's got the O's, I mean, the red stands for completion, doesn't it? CO?
CO, yeah, that's close out.
Okay. So are there any of them that aren't completed? Well, I guess Ninth Grade.
Mace Smith?
We've got Ella Smith, Pomeroy, Early College Projects, Dobie Ninth. Mace Smith, bid in February.
Any other questions on construction or construction update? We move on to the miscellaneous sections. Under Communications, we have none. We don't have any carryover of public comments. But we have our Quarterly Internal Audit Report. Ms. Maritza Davis is going to speak to us.
Good evening. I am here to present the Quarterly Report, Internal Audit Report. You should have in your packet, two pages, front and back, total of four pages, of a summary of the audits that we completed this past quarter. We actually completed eight audits. Four elementaries, one middle campus, one intermediate, and two special campuses. This past quarter, we actually rolled out our new format in our reporting. You will now notice that we went to a color code and a grading scale. Obviously, green is good, yellow is borderline, and red is not so good. In addition, you will also see the grading scale from 0 to 3, with of course, 3 being excellent and 0 being insufficient. There are still some common findings, like coding, that we're seeing. This past quarter, one of the things that we started checking was on our activity codes, the entries made in order to get them to have a beginning balance. We were seeing some duplicate entries in that. Those, we are working with accounting to get those completed and corrected.
Where are you at?
I'm actually right in the center, sir. Under Common Audit Findings in the front page. Yes. Our focus for the next quarter is actually to complete two high school audits. We're actually very close to completing Sam Rayburn and Pasadena. In addition, we will start our department audits. And we anticipate on completing that parent organization update. Any questions I can answer on the, the findings on the report?
Maritza, it's my understanding you don't conduct audits of the, the PTAs, booster clubs, that kind of thing.
That is correct. I don't.
How, how do we know that that money is being spent properly? You know, I have real concerns. This goes back a long way. But, you know, there's a lot of money that changes hands with these organizations. And it concerns me a great deal that sometimes that accounting is not very well taken care of.
And that is a possibility. I mean, those controls, basically the board of the parent organizations, are going to have to see that they're being followed. And that's where their bylaws actually come into play to ensure that, you know, they... to ensure that, you know, they have double check signing or, you know, ensuring that they don't have a debit card where anyone can go and charge. But it really falls back on the board of the parent organization.
Do you see any of that? Are they supposed to turn anything in to you guys?
On the board policy, we actually do have a requirement where they have to turn in, like, the bylaws, the officer contacts. Annually, they have to submit actually an annual financial, so we can submit it to our external auditors. But we don't go in there, as far as internal audit, we don't go in there and actually audit the parent organization's financials.
What can we do to, is there anything we can do to account for that? Because it's just an open door for somebody to come in and take a ton of money.
And I think the parent education is the piece that we're trying to be sure that, you know, we have the guide, it was quite thick. And so, Maritza and her team are trying to get that pared down to where there'll be links to all the important forms and organizations like the IRS and others that they need to be aware of. So we're trying to make it as user-friendly, or more user-friendly than what we maybe have seen. I think this is a challenge of any district, any nonprofit type situation. But I think we're, with the help of being available to parents that want to call, or organizations, booster clubs that want to call and ask questions, we make ourselves available to answer those questions. You know, as John might say, a gang of parents could be out there, you know, doing things that we don't want them to be doing, and I understand that. But we also want parents to support our organizations and support our athletics and our fine arts and all of the different clubs and groups that we have. We want them involved, it's just, there's a lot of risk.
There are a lot of risks. And I think that a lot of times, what happens is, you know, they respond to pressure from the organization to spend monies sometimes that haven't been set aside for that purpose. I just, I have a real concern. I've seen too many times over the years, money being, people profiting from these kind of organizations.
And there's, I guess, penalties.
Who controls that money? What does the law say? If someone is caught pilfering from the, what does the law say?
Well, I-
Does our, does our, does our police department investigate it? Or does the city investigate?
I would contact our school district police. The IRS has penalties for individuals, but there's also criminal penalties.
So, getting back to what Vicky's saying, this is booster money. As far as the school district, our police officers are the ones that are going to investigate it, I suspect. But that's where it ends.
Chief, would you turn that over to the city? Or would you follow through the entire investigation?
We follow through on the entire investigation. And if there's a case presented to the district attorney's office.
And that's assuming they all have a 501(c)(3), which I doubt that.
No, a lot of them, well, they're supposed to.
Now, and we do have a few that have not obtained it, but for the most part, I have been working with the ones that do not. And I think we're down to maybe two or three parent organizations not having that 501(c)(3).
I know, at one time, I've known of several organizations that have had that 501(c)(3) that benefit lapse because they haven't done the things that they were required to do.
Correct. In those cases, we actually saw that they did not actually follow their 990 form.
Yeah.
And they actually, their 501(c)(3) got revoked.
Now, in any organization that's established in their bylaws, do we have any sort of requirement that a campus person sit on that board?
I would have to go check, but I think the answer's no. But don't quote me on that. I can go check.
And we do make recommendations to principals about closing, I guess you would say, transferring that responsibility from a parent group that is not following the requirements and making that a student account, or perhaps follow through with the activity and all the rules and requirements that go with those accounts.
Yeah, for the ones that actually no longer exist, that was their, their alternative was to set up an activity group, to where the principal's actually 100% responsible, and it's district funds.
You say that's district funds. Now, let's say we have an athletic program that brings in money. Does that go into their, their specific activity fund?
Yes.
For that sport?
For that program.
If there's not a booster.
So if it's just volleyball, it's just volleyball. It's not any other, it's not soccer, it's not football?
No, not from what I've seen. It's actually, if, well, for example, if we have an orchestra parent organization, if that booster dissolves, it's been placed into the Fund 461 orchestra activity. So that program benefits from it.
And then it's handled by the district?
Yes.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just, it's a real concern that I have.
I understand.
You know, I've seen it happen over the years. And like I say, we're talking about a lot of these booster clubs and PTAs, or PTOs, whatever, raising thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of money. And I just, I'm worried that there's no accountability.
Maritza, am I right? School district employees cannot serve on booster club boards? Is that correct?
No, for example, if you have an employee that works at Bailey and they want to actually serve, or that works at Bailey Elementary and actually wants to serve as a board capacity at Dobie, they can.
That's, they can at another school, but not at their own.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's governed through who? Through the UIL, or?
It's on the board policy.
Through you.
Is there any other questions for Maritza?
I've got an observation.
I'm sorry?
I said, I don't have a question, I have an observation.
Yes, sir.
The accountability at campuses is terrible.
I'm not happy with it, you're correct.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
If John Pachata Grant had been like that, we'd all be in federal prison.
That's true.
And Maritza and I meet monthly. We discuss coming up with the scoring system, so we could be a little clearer in the areas that campuses need to improve and get more training and assistance with.
We said that the last time we talked about this.
We did, and that's when we came up with the sys- are you talking about the last quarter?
About a year or two ago.
Oh, okay. Well, we've brought Maritza back quarterly, so she'll, but you're going to see a lot of her. And hopefully, you'll see improvement. I think this system's a little more transparent than just comments on a form. And she has detailed reports of all these campuses. We had a discussion today about bookkeepers and what training they need and how we need to hire from here forward, as far as the education and the abilities that those individuals have. So we'll continue to work to make it better. I know it's frustrating. We talked about coding and working on that with even principals. They need to be as aware as the secretary or the bookkeeper on coding. Some of these areas where you see red all the way across, that means all of our campuses are not doing a good job in that area. And that's where we need to focus our education on the most.
Is that complicated? Or does that mean that they need training? Or does that mean they just don't want to do it?
It's a long list of coding.
It's IRS to the 10th degree.
Well-
There's Rhonda.
Records management.
It's doable.
Not available, not available, not available.
Well, it's doable, but it's crazy.
I cannot have records management. I cannot have fundraising guidelines and procedures. I'm looking at Tegler.
I was just looking at coding.
Look, I'm just looking at specifics, where nothing's being done.
And those are for each, they audited the principal, the class, I guess, what is this, PE? What, workroom, school? Are these different activities, Maritza? On the second, page 3 of 4.
First thing, guidelines and procedures. N.A., 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 N.A.
On the N.A., let me clarify, yeah. On the, those were not applicable. Sometimes we don't test that. So if you see a gray, it means we possibly- right, it probably did not apply to that organization, or we didn't test it.
Not available.
That helps a lot.
Right, yes. The red is the ones that, right, no. The red is actually, if they weren't available, they would appear in red.
Okay, okay, thank you, Maritza.
Sure.
That makes a lot of difference. But still, it's not good.
Coding's not too hot, but the cash receipts, I mean, you know, that's not that, that's not that complicated.
And I think on the coding, Mr. Prischak, I think you, within the business office, y'all actually changed a process to where we actually have staff accountants checking the coding now. Is that correct?
Yes, we're doing a lot more checking than we have in the past.
Lord knows, we get handed for receipts.
They're not checking so they don't have to do it?
I mean, they know y'all are going to straighten it out. Because you get down to general ledger, all of a sudden, it's okay. So somebody's straightened it out somewhere. It doesn't look like it's happening at the campus. I mean, that's just what it looks like to me. I don't know. But when I saw this, you know, if it's red and yellow all the way across, and red and yellow all the way down, you've got a problem in the system, and then you've got a problem in a school. And there's one school on here that there's a real problem.
Yeah.
And there'll be one the next time we meet, because we had a discussion about that campus today. And we've asked the ASCDs to work with the principals and actually sit in when they need to on these audit reports, when the information's given back to the principals. The principals then come up with a corrective action plan.
That is correct.
And then Maritza and her team go back out to make sure that's been put in place and that improvements are taking place. So those follow-up visits are going to start in January?
They actually will start next week.
Next week.
How long do you give them?
Normally, it's 90 days.
How many people you have helping you, Maritza?
I only have two.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You know, we have this conversation every time we walk in. And either, and some things are basic. And, you know, we're there to educate kids. Maybe these, maybe the folks here are busier doing that than they are, this sort of thing. But if it's not important enough to straighten out, there's no use to check it, it's a waste of time. And I hate to say this, that's too many, too many people, too, too many people. If we're going to check it and not do anything about it, and I don't, I don't think the auditor should be the one following up and doing it. I think the folks sitting on, a couple of them on that front. I'm just, I'm thinking about, now I'm saying I'm acting like that's what ought to happen. I'm not saying that. Y'all, you know what needs to happen. But somebody in management has got to take care of that, not the auditor. The auditor's got, in my past life, the auditor goes on somewhere else. They show up again to catch you again.
And they do share the reports?
But the management, the management's got to take care of that. Look, this is important, and we've got to help you do it. And the next time, or the next 90 days, you know what, we can't help you because we don't have time. So we're going to find somebody else. And I hate to say it like that, but that's just the way it needs to be. Otherwise, don't do this. That's just, and that's the end of that.
Well, I was brave enough and transparent enough to bring these quarterly reports back, because you haven't had these in a while. And so, we're going to keep doing it, whether it brings our blood pressure up or not. We're going to keep doing it and keep improving.
It opens our eyes.
It is good.
It is good, we need to know this.
Unfortunately, what happened the last time we discussed this, a long time ago, these same procedures were going to be implemented, and things get better. But this changed.
Well, and-
So you know what I'm not talking about, too?
I think our education has gotten better. And we'll continue to monitor and work with our principals and the folks that they have handling this. It's a big job. I mean, when we talk about cash receipts, I know that sounds simple, but when kids are turning in milk money, pencil money, book fair money, you name it, t-shirt money, field trip money, it gets to be a very big job, which I'm not sure we have. Okay, their list is going on and on out there. You can tell which ones have dealt with it in the past. I'm not sure we have enough personnel to do that as well as we would like. But we know we need to have the personnel that we do have taking it very seriously and being at their desk and focusing on the job at hand and crossing their Ts and dotting their Is. So we're going to keep working at it. And hopefully, someday, I'll bring you an all-green report. And we'll be very pleased that the improvements have actually taken hold. I'm not sure I can do that, but I'll rise to the challenge.
How much, how much, though? How many of these fees can they pay online?
A lot of the high schools have the fees online. The intermediate schools have some of the fees online. But we're talking at an elementary, a lot of just little, I mean, we receive everything over a dollar. Correct me anytime I give inaccurate information.
It all depends on the type of collection, how we receive, by student or not. So concession, we actually don't receive by individual student. Whereas a t-shirt, we, we would.
You know, lost IDs.
We actually receive.
So, I mean, you're talking lots of money. And like you said, a lot of trust, a lot of money exchanging hands throughout the day. And I know the police do a good job making sure we get that brought over to the administration building, but it's a lot of money.
Is there any way to maximize the online, though? Even further, to other fees?
We've gotten better and better, taking credit cards, putting various fees. I know I pay most, all my student fees at Dobie for my child through online. But they're, you know, once they get into high school, they're big fees. I'm not paying.
It's not even, it's not even good. I mean, it's good for the district, but it's good for me as a parent, too. Because when my kid comes to ask me for money, half the time, I don't have cash on me, you know? So, it's a win-win both ways.
Some parents take more, I would say, better advantage of it than others. There's a little bit of a service fee attached to it. So that might be a concern to some parents. But it is helpful. It's definitely helped with the accountability piece. We have them all at the intermediate and high school. Do we have any middle schools with the credit card machine? with the credit card machine, or all of, all the middle, okay?
Even elementary campuses have been set up.
Okay, so we've improved greatly in that area.
Thank you, Maritza, for your presentation.
You're welcome, we appreciate it.
You know, income coming in is hard to track and hard to code, I promise you, if you cut some income off, they'll know exactly how much is missing, and they'll know exactly where it was supposed to have come from.
I get what you're saying.
I thought you might. Maritza, thank you so much for watching.
Absolutely. You have a tough job.
Your other you.
And ultimately, we do want to know this, so...
Thank you.
You're going to read these.
Yes, I am.
As all of you know, board members have to go to school, too, and obtain credits for us to stay in our board position, and Dr. Powell is going to read the board training announcement for tonight.
So I have the honor to announce the credits that were attained by our board members for continuing education credits received by the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees for 2016. Completing the annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under state Board of Education rules. The following information will be reflected in our minutes for the meeting tonight. The update to the Texas Education Code, that's not applicable this year. For team building, we had Mrs. Sullivan, Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and Ms. Marisol Kiano all in attendance, and they all received the three hours of required credit for team building training on October 5th, 2016, at the PISD Administration Building with Candice Alfinger LLC hosting that board team building training. Additional continuing education, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan exceeds the requirements of five hours, Mr. Fred Roberts exceeds the requirement of five hours, Mr. Kenny Fernandez exceeds the requirement of five hours, Mrs. Vicky Morgan exceeds the requirement of five hours, Mr. Jack Bailey exceeds the requirement of five hours, Mr. Marshall Kendrick exceeds the requirement of five hours, and Ms. Marisol Kiano exceeds the requirement of five hours. Records of the training received by individual board members are available for public inspection in the superintendent's office. That sounds different than when Mr. Joyner does it.
He did good job.
He has a good voice.
He does.
You're not going to check mine?
Is anyone going to run and check Mr. Roberts' training in the superintendent's office?
Don't check the proficiency, just the... I think I got a red.
I have evidence, you were there.
I think I got a red. Fred and I take over five hours to get to that five hour proficiency.
During our personnel reviews section, we omitted an item that needs to be read at this time.
I just want to recognize those who are retiring at the end of this year, many who have many years of experience, and we thank them for their dedication. Sandra Chaney at Jackson Intermediate teaches reading, she's retiring with 15 years in education, all in PISD. Tom Dur, Moore Elementary PE, he will be greatly missed as well, 38 years in education, all in PISD. Jan Perez, Sam Rayburn High School English, 30 years in education, seven with PISD. Deverd Nicholas, Southmore Intermediate Technology Applications, 47 years in education, 16, 15 with PISD. Nancy Saldivar, Special Programs Diagnostician, 19 years in education, 16 of those in PISD. We certainly congratulate our retirees, and we wish them well in their retirement. Good health and happiness.
The next item on our agenda is to set the date for the next regular meeting. The suggested date is Tuesday, January the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting will be January the 24th, 2017.
2017, that sounds great.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
It's 8:15.